Seats up front in case people can't see.
Okay.
And once they leave, then they will be off.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting. Mrs. Logan, if you would please call the roll. Mr. Level?
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Pearl?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second, second. Mrs. Logan, when you're ready. Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Board president's comments. Just welcome to everyone this evening. Superintendent's comments?
Likewise, welcome to everybody that's here, and we'll get to the students quick.
Mrs. Logan, treasurer's comments?
I'm gonna follow the two of you, and let's get to the students.
Yep, Mrs. Fuller.
Last year, a pilot program at Plains Junior School kicked off a three-year health and wellness plan for seventh and eighth graders in our district. Sources of Strength is a peer leader group that is designed to be a companion to our high school Hope Squads. The students who are nominated by their teachers are charged with promoting a positive school climate, healthy decision-making, and suicide prevention. Here to tell you more about the program are four of its members: Aubrey Burns, Jasmine Goodwin, Kiara Sheffield, and Janaya Smith. Jacob Shaw and Mariah Walker, two of the group's advisors, are also here to share with you.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Burns, and I am one of many people in Social Strength. In Social Strength, we want to help others. We felt super important at our age to be there for our peers. Some of the others don't feel like they have people to turn to when times get tough. So at Source of Strength, we want to be the people that others can feel comfortable turning to. We feel that sometimes it's easier to talk to someone our own age than our other adults. Thank you.
Our group has many purposes. One of our main goals is to make others feel included. September is Suicide Prevention Month. This is a topic we do not want to be afraid to approach head-on, as many of our students may be struggling silently. We want students to know that they are free to talk to anyone and should know people care about their feelings. We have conveyed this message to students in the building by having them write kind messages on post-it notes. We took these notes and made them into a poster, as you may have seen when you walked into the building. We strive to make this school a safe place for everyone, not just physically but mentally. The further this year progresses, the more project we will work on for our students to know that they are included. Thank you.
Here at Source of Strength, we strive for everyone to have fun, and with that, we have some ideas for school events. An idea we have is Teacher Appreciation Day, which we will have kids write notes to teachers, and if they wanted to, they could bring something for those teachers. Thank you.
We wanted, we wanted to share some, some things for students, like making candy grams, where students write positive messages, then we put into candy to give to other students. Another is where students will bring in money for, to the class, and whoever gets the most money, the teacher will get pied in the face. We use this money to buy things where, that have positive messages for everyone to see. Thank you.
We know from research that stress and anxiety Hi, I'm Mariah Walker. I'm one of the advisors for Sources of Strength here at Peds. We know from research that stress and anxiety are at an all-time high for students, and suicide is one of the leading causes of death for adolescents. We know we need to take steps to address this situation, such as the Hope Squads in the high schools, but we found Sources of Strength to be more appropriate for the needs of junior high students. Plains was the pilot school in Lakota last year, and we are happy to have expanded to all four junior schools for this year. The mission of Sources of Strength is to build a positive school culture with trained peer leaders who spread messages of hope, health, and strength. Our students are not counselors, but they are trained to connect students to help if they notice someone struggling. We already have an amazing group of peer leaders, and we will be adding more later in the year to continue spreading the message of Sources of Strength.
Maybe we could do board comments before we leave the room? Thank you all. Great job, students. Thank you. But when our students come and show us such positive messages. Okay, we have reached the first part of our public comment, our first point of public comment. Just a reminder, as stated in Lakota School District Board of Education Policy 0169.1, the board values public expressions on educational issues. The Board of Education also values an efficient and orderly meeting. Therefore, public partition will be governed by the following rules: Speakers are encouraged to register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting. Speakers will be asked to start their comments by indicating their name, address, and, if appropriate, group affiliation. That's for students. Each statement may be made by a participant limited to three minutes. Each statement must be directed to the presiding officers. No person may address or question board members individually. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. To protect employees' rights, the board does not hear complaints about specific employees in public session. In the event of a speaker has complained about a specific employee here, she is encouraged to file such complaints with the superintendent or the treasurer. Violation of these guidelines will result, first, in a warning that the speaker has violated the rules, and, second, in the forfeiture of the speaker's time. And today, Mr. Zink in the back will be keeping time. So he will be the one that tells if you're, when your time is up. So we will start with the list that we have. And the first person I have for agenda is Dresden Peters. Is that correct?
There's still several seats in the front for anybody in the back who'd like to come forward and get a seat.
Yes, there's four seats up front. Yep, go ahead.
Dresden Souls Peters, Anderson Drive, Liberty Township. Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My son is so excited to be in school, and he has been having a blast. He's grateful for the mask mandate and the fact that it's keeping him and others safe. It's a no-brainer to my eight-year-old that this is a small, simple act of kindness that can legitimately save lives. While he misses seeing his friends' faces and smiles, he told me, "Well, it's better to be kind to people and stay alive and healthy." The science is there that universal masking is effective in slowing the spread of the COVID-19 virus. I implore you to maintain the mask mandate until all, until students of all ages have had the chance to receive the vaccination. Adults have the privilege to choose vaccines or to ignore science. However, children do not have the luxury of that choice. It is imperative that, until privilege is extended to all, every mitigation method available is enacted to protect the right to the many. This is especially important as cases are again climbing, and I am concerned about the potential of school shutdowns, which massively impact learning in a holiday season in which children may not be able to visit their loved ones again. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Allmeyer?
Hi, Jessica Allmeyer, Kensington Trail, Liberty Township. I first want to say thank you to the board for having this open forum and for allowing us to speak. I had the chance to speak at the meeting about a month ago as well, and I'm here again in support and appreciation for the mask mandate. I have to be honest and say that I had an entirely different statement planned for several weeks after the last meeting. I went home, and I really had big plans and wanted to counter some of the arguments from those opposing masks, and I used all my nursing skills and my education to do my research and to cite my sources and to do all of this. And then I thought to myself, "You are speaking with Cincinnati Children's and UC Health and the Board of Health, and these are the true experts. These are the boots on the ground. They are on the front lines. They are seeing what is happening. They're seeing the research, and they're the actual experts. They have the tools in order to interpret the expertise." They've all spoken very clearly in support of masking in schools. Just last week, Cincinnati Children's released a research study showing that masking was effective in schools. So I'm gonna let the experts be the experts, and I'm gonna speak just as a parent today. Those against masking would like you to believe that children are suffering and miserable, and school is ruined because of masking, and I think it's actually the opposite. Every single day, I ask my daughter how school was, and she talks about what her teacher read, what specials she had. She tells me about lunch in the playground, and she shares it all, good and bad. And I can tell you that masking literally never comes up unless I specifically ask her about it. It's just a part of her day that doesn't really have a big impact on anything else, just like putting on socks with her shoes. And I'm sure that there are some kids that complain a bit, but in my experience, kids' feelings on masking is just a reflection of how their parents and the people around them are acting. So my daughter is happy and thriving, and it seems her classmates are as well. I'd also like to give praise to our teachers, administrators, and staff because they are taking the brunt of this, and they continue to provide our children with their best. I also want to ask the board what they might be doing to support teachers who are at really high risk of burnout during these tumultuous times. They are truly stuck in the middle of all of this, and they are giving us our best, their best, and we need to give them our best as well. And as a reminder to parents, your children are watching and learning from you, and when you disrespect the rules, you can't be surprised when they do as well. And it's our teachers that are having to deal with that. So I'd like to thank you again, and I hope you continue to follow the expert advice and keep the mask mandate in place until that time when numbers are down and staying down, and all of our children are eligible to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Schinner? If you guys could please speak right into the mic, just so we can make sure we hear everyone.
Sure. Okay. Hi, I'm Amy Schinner. I live on Jane Court in Westchester. I'm here to actually congratulate you guys for keeping the schools open. My sister lives in Kalamazoo, Michigan. They did not, they just went back to school. They had not been there since March of 2020. So the entire district, not just my nephews. They're starting to feel what that meant. My nephew, who is a second grader, he, they're getting letters home. There are kids in second grade that don't know letter sounds, and I don't mean a couple that need special help. I mean way more than there should be. They basically went from half of kindergarten into second grade. Keeping them open is imperative. It helps not just the obvious academic things that, that Kalamazoo is dealing with, but the kids that are living in dangerous homes, that school is a break. LGBTQ and specifically trans kids who get to be who they need to be at school because they can't be that at home. Kids who have food insecurity. All of these people need to be in school, and to do that, keeping the mask on makes it happen. You don't have Lebanon who had to shut down for a few weeks because, again, the cases go crazy. The fact that there were so few cases that had contact tracing back to the school is amazing, and it proved the way you were, guys were doing work. So please, please keep that going, not just for the kids in school. My kids are graduated. They're, they're doing their thing, but as a community member, if it's spreading through the schools, it's spreading everywhere. So it really affects everybody. So thank you for all that you guys have been doing, and keep it up.
Thank you. Is it Dana Richardson?
Dana Richardson, Berry Hill Drive, Westchester. Good evening. I'm here this evening to give you my continued support regarding mandatory masks for all Lakota students and staff. At last month's meeting, the board agreed to readdress the situation and determine if masks should remain mandatory at this time by reviewing facts, numbers, and data. I'm sure as most people have seen, and as some people have already mentioned, tonight, just last week, Cincinnati Children's published a report that reviewed infection rates in schools with mask mandates and schools with masks of choice. Those numbers clearly showed that districts with masking, with mandatory masking, had significantly lower rates of infection and quarantines. Students at schools without mandatory masking were found to be at 78% more likely to contract COVID-19, and quarantine rates were 60% higher in those schools. That is directly from the study that they took from data in our area. That is not insignificant, and it gives heavy merit to continuing universal masking in our district. Anecdotally, many of my friends and coworkers in districts with optional masking are frustrated with partial shutdowns, transition to remote learning, quarantines, and unfortunately, in several cases, their children and subsequently others in their family contracting COVID from the school setting. While pediatric death rates from COVID may be low, which many people like to tell that one number and that one number only, that is not the only impact that we should remember. Data and studies, facts, show that 15 to 40% of children continue to suffer from symptoms even just following mild infections months later. Symptoms like severe fatigue, headaches, brain fog, pain, and heart and respiratory problems. Disruption to school, work, and family life takes a toll. Before I left my house tonight, I asked my husband and kids if they wanted to say, if they wanted me to say anything for them. My sixth grader said, "Tell them that I don't love the masks." She said, "I don't know who all does, and we, we don't love the masks. Not, we really don't." But she said, "I'm used to them, and I would rather be in school with them than missing stuff without them. They aren't hurting me." I also have a son who has been receiving intervention through the Lakota District since he was four. He's on the autism spectrum, and part of his intervention is for pragmatic speech, the nonverbal portion of speech, that is reading emotions, reading facial expressions, interpreting social settings, and learning how to have the back and forth of conversation, social interactions. Since he's been back in school with masks, he has been meeting his IEP goals. He has not fallen behind. He is making progress, and he is thriving. I can only speak to my children, their mind, and those are their stories, but my children are doing well. They are thriving, and they are appreciating being in school despite wearing a mask. I, my husband said, "I think it's pretty clear that we should continue with universal masking," and
At your time, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, Jennifer Richardson?
Hello, Jennifer Richardson, Tyler's Valley Drive, Westchester. I'm just reading from a recent article from the Cincinnati Inquirer. Cincinnati Children's study COVID-19 cases quarantine lowers in schools with mask mandates. The article focuses on Dr. Katherine Auger, a pediatrician who cares for hospitalized children and associate care of outcomes in the Cincinnati Children's Pediatrics Department. Recently examined COVID-19 coast caseloads in several Cincinnati-area schools to learn whether universal masking really makes a difference. Her study shows it does. The rate of students getting diagnosed with COVID-19 was 78% higher in the partially masked schools than those who had universal masking. The rate of students being quarantined was 60% higher in the partially masked schools. The ratio of quarantines per COVID-19 case was 30% higher in the partially masked schools. Bottom line, the districts with universal masking have significantly lower rate of COVID-19 cases, and quarantines were lower, too. Quote, "We were struck by how big that difference was," Dr. Auger said, "especially in such a short period of time." The study was done in about three weeks from the beginning of the school year to September 7. It's been Auger's job during the pandemic to focus on COVID-19 policies that affect children, including school closings. The goal of current research is to learn as much about COVID-19 and schools to help children return safely to school, hospital officials say. Dr. Auger said, "Universal masking not only keeps the unvaccinated students and staff safe from COVID-19, but is helpful to young children who need to see role models and adults and other older students around them, and is less stressful for teenagers who are saddled with worries about fitting in with other students." Quote, "Masks work. They are effective. They do change the number of cases we see in schools, and masks are safe," she said. Mr. Miller and the entire school board, please listen to the medical experts like Dr. Katherine Auger and keep requiring masks to be worn in all of our Lakota schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Darby Bodie?
Thank you, Darby Bodie, Cherry Wood Lane. The way these masks are being used is a health risk, and most of us know that they do nothing to stop the spread of the virus. Face masks are highly contaminated, and the regular use of them is not just dangerous to the person wearing them, but dangerous to anyone that comes in contact with them or any objects that they come in contact with, including pencils and pens and doorknobs and desktops. As you know, that piece of cloth worn on a child's face ends up as a veritable Petri dish of pathogens. Every adult in this entire school system knows that the mouth is the dirtiest place on your body. And we want our children to breathe and rebreathe those pathogens and bacteria eight hours a day. Last month, I referred to a recent analysis from the University of Florida examining masks our kids are wearing that identify no less than 96 unique strands of biological contaminants, including a big percentage of antibiotic-resistant strands. Some of these include pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, Lyme, Lyme disease, and Legionnaires' disease. As I said, these masks are not just dangerous to the child wearing them, they endanger the entire school. It feels like mass insanity to think that there are adults that don't understand this. The regular use of these masks is child abuse on a child's psyche, and it is abuse on their health. This is child abuse.
Can you please direct your comments to the board and not to the audience?
I think I read that already.
Thank you.
Thank you. What happened to the old-fashioned rule, "If you're sick, stay home"? I think we now understand that COVID is a non, is non-asymptomatic. Matt, I would like to know where you got your data that supports the efficacy of masks in preventing the spread of coronavirus from either child to child, child to adult, adult to child, or even adult to adult. Thank you. Thank you.
Marcy Addington?
Hi, Marcy Myers-Addington. I want to apologize. My allergies are driving me crazy, so my voice is especially low tonight, so. I'd like to, as a parent, ask you to continue to unpat that you're on in regards to the masks. I looked at the numbers. As of today, 688,000 Americans have died from this. With the Delta variant, I personally know more people that have gotten it than the first wave, which stymies me, but it is what it is. And we've surpassed the 1918 Spanish flu numbers, and I know where our population is greater, but I would think we would get, you know, during this time, we got a little smarter. Unfortunately, these numbers aren't exhibiting this at times. I'd like to say that, you know, in regards to the Cincinnati Children's report, I think I read it, and I was impressed that they stayed to the local area. There's a lot of different areas. North Carolina, Arizona, they're coming up with the same numbers, so it's not, this is not an anomaly. Onto a couple positive things, besides the fact that I want you to continue to keep our kids safe and wear the mask. Sources of Strength, I am really impressed that they brought it down to the junior high level. My daughter was in one of the, the first Hope Squad group, and it just helped her own, you know, thinking that she was helping people. People were coming here. It works. Peer-to-peer counseling works for these kids. Sometimes they don't feel comfortable talking to their teachers, so I'm really impressed that the school's done it. I also like to point out that International Day of Peace at Cherokee. I like the fact that the kids took it upon themselves, they included artwork into it. They were showing their creativity with it, and I think that's really cool that we do that kind of stuff in our district. So there's a lot of good things, a lot of the schools, the walkathons, the movie nights at Adena. I mean, I have four little boys live next door, and the excitement that they come home and tell me about, the things that they're still able to do, so I really hope that we could keep the kids in school and keep them active. Thank you.
Thank you. Dominic LaJoy?
My name is Dominic LaJoy, and I live on Ambleside Drive in Westchester. I commend this board's recommendation requiring at the beginning of this school year and Matt Miller's decision to direct it. The filing data testify that it was the right decision. As reported in the Washington Post, the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention on Friday offered more evidence that school mask requirements can help keep children healthy and in classrooms, showing lower spikes in pediatric coronavirus cases and fewer school outbreaks in places that require them. In an analysis of 520 U.S. counties, the CDC found that pediatric cases rose more sharply in places without school mask requirements. And in a separate report that looked at Arizona's two most populous counties, the agency found that schools without mask requirements were three and a half times more likely to experience an outbreak than schools with them. The pandemic has already taken a toll on the new school year. In a, in a third report, the CDC said more than 900,000 students in 44 states had been affected by closures between August 5th, I'm sorry, August 1st and mid-September. Moreover, besides that information, Lakota's mask requirement was sound from a biblical standpoint, which I had shared with a member of the school board in August. Most of us have heard the command, "You shall love your neighbor as yourself." The verse I share is like yet from the Book of Romans. It clearly says, "Love does no harm to a neighbor." I believe Lakota School District's decision on the mask requirements modeled that biblical directive for our children and Lakota neighbors. More than anything, this is a biblical truth, and in my view, this should be the leading criteria, along with data, in the decision which I hope you make to continue wearing masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Penska?
Don't you have to actually be a Lakota resident? Who was not?
I am.
He is a Lakota resident. Please stop. It's, he stated his address, sir.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Penska. I live on Gregory Creek Lane in Westchester. I have two grandsons who attended Union Elementary and Hopewell Junior High. Both now attend Lakota East High School. One is a freshman and one is a senior, and they love, love going to school. But this is what I want. I want you to think back for a moment of all the great experiences you had in school. Football and basketball games, plays and concerts, clubs, proms, and your first crush. I want you to remember your favorite teachers. You know, the ones that inspired your love for education so deeply that you have taken on a major role in developing our school district. I want you to remember the creative ways your teachers excited you about certain subjects and the life lessons you learned by being exposed to different people and ideas. I want you to remember being choked up when you experienced seniors going back to their elementary school before graduation and receiving the high fives from the children lined up along the halls, aspiring to be them one day. Now change your memories to last year, to virtual learning, to an adjusted prom, to a jeopardized graduation, to the isolation our children felt, and the sympathy you felt for students who were robbed of experience of both education and social experiences. I want to honor the administration, teachers, and staff that have done everything they could to protect our children and themselves. I want to apologize on behalf of facts, logic, and reason that you have to put up with a distraction of anti-masking. According to the Ohio Department of Health, as of 2:00 PM today, 1,707 children have been hospitalized for COVID, and nine children have died. Zero children have died from wearing masks or have been killed by them. My grandsons love school. They love being involved in marching band. They love their teachers and are engaged and inspired by them. They think wearing a mask to be able to be back in school with their peers and participate in football games, competitions, concerts, is a small price to pay, and they are right. Maybe it's time we learn from them. So please, when considering the mask mandate, ignore the cacophony of rage and ignorance. Move forward, stay true to your vision, keep doing the job you've been doing, and know that you have the support of many, many students, parents, and grandparents. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Argo?
I'm Alex Argo, I live on Butch House Way, Liberty Township. Thanks for continuing to let us speak. It seems like every other day there's a new study coming out that compares school districts or counties with masking requirements. Whether it's the Children's Hospital Study or CDC, they show the same thing. Mask requirements make children in school less likely to test positive for COVID-19. We've seen plenty of data about the lower quarantine numbers and have seen other school districts who have had to cancel various extracurricular activities and even go remote for periods of time. Meanwhile, in Lakota, we have experienced a taste of normalcy. Falls in full gear, we are seeing elementary walkathons and having football games, marching band competitions and homecoming, and Lakota is doing amazing at all these things. PTOs and PTAs are even allowed to start having some volunteers back in the buildings and give just a little bit of help to the teachers and staff who have had a tough COVID over the past 18 months. Sure, not everything is as it once was, but masks have allowed most of this to go on without a hitch. I know it will be a vote to ratify the superintendent's mask decisions and authorize Mr. Miller to make changes as needed later in this meeting, and the board voted last month, and I encourage them to make this the final vote on this matter unless they're putting new policy into effect on masks. Mr. Miller has shown his priority has been to keep our children safe and in school and to listen to the health experts. Last year, when he saw quarantines were affecting the ability for our children to be in school, he worked with the Health Department to change the rules. I respectfully ask the board to empower Mr. Miller to make these day-to-day management decisions and let the work of the board move on to the many other priorities and challenges that our district faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Leila Huznoff?
My name is Leila Huznoff, I live at 5344 Buckwood Drive, I'm in Thurgley, I go into Endeavor. I'm against the mask mandate. I believe masks should be optional, and I'm going to talk about why I don't think we should be forced to wear masks. Masks make me hot and sweat more than usual. I'm worried I'm not going to get enough oxygen. Masks inhibit oxygen, we should be breathing, our brain uses 20% of our oxygen, our little brains are still developing, we need as much as oxygen it can get. I have a hard time focusing and concentrating with them on. They're annoying because they're uncomfortable, they're itchy, and I touch my face more than I should. Dangerous germs can get stuck inside the mask when we breathe in. Wearing masks causes the immune systems to take a break and get weak because it is not exposed to the constant germs that keep it strong. It's like lifting weights, if you don't use it, you lose it. We can't see friends, classmates, and teachers' faces, it affects relationships with them. We learn better when we can see teachers' faces and expressions. I feel like we are all scared of each other because we may be dangerous and infected. I know many other kids agree that masks affect us negatively. Many studies have shown masks don't work. The studies also show masks affect our mental health in a bad way. The dangers of masks, both physically and psychology, are far worse than the benefits. There are stadiums filled with tens of thousands of people standing very close together without masks. Data from the CDC have shown these events are not super spreaders. It is not fair because us kids are not at high risk of COVID, but we have to be a part and wear masks. Does the district get money if you follow the state guidelines on masks and quarantine? I guess money is more important than our health. The plan to win the best for your students is true, the case, and the mask mandate. Thank you very much.
Katie, Katie Jesse.
A week before school started, I couldn't have been more excited that more things were returning back to normal. Then boom, less than 48 hours before the birthday, Mr. Miller announced the masks were now required for everyone. I was sitting in the parking lot at Midpoint Library and just broke down. I cannot do another year of this, especially since it is my senior year. Luckily, I was able to get an exemption form and have it approved before the first day. It still feels weird not being able to see my friends and teachers' faces. Ever since the first day of school, people have been staring at me because I don't have a mask on. I have a feeling that everyone who sees me and knows of my political affiliation thinks that I'm trying to make a political statement. I simply don't wear one because of personal struggles. I see kids in the hallways that I don't know if I know who they are. When the bell rings and I'm dismissed from my class, over half the kids I see in the hallways either have their mask on their chin or blow their nose. My friends are complaining nonstop about having to wear a mask. Some kids in my classes will pull their mask down to sneeze or cough into their elbow. According to coronavirus.ohio.gov, the mortality rate is still at 0% and has been this entire time. Everyone thought it was just going to take two weeks to stop the spread, but this is a virus, so it will spread no matter what it is. Since COVID has started, the flu cases have been cut in half. In the past, with flu breakouts, Lakota didn't mandate masks. What is the difference with this virus? Personally, I think half of the kids that go to East are either vaccinated or have natural immunity to the virus. With the biggest stance out of the way, for both East and West, we should see a return to normalcy in schools. Principal Burnside and his team did an amazing job with homecoming and everything leading up to it. Mason City Schools, a neighboring school district, has been maskless since the start of the year. They have had a total of 55 cases in their high school building since the start. Three of the 55 cases were caused by school, the others were from community exposure. All in all, I think it's time that the board lets the parents and students make these choices for themselves. We students know what's best for ourselves, not other people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Isaac Ady, 50, 18, Atterby Ridge Drive. Last month, I asked a question regarding the mask mandate that was passing by the superintendent. I have not received any answer to that. The question I have today is, how did he arrive at that decision? Because the data that he provided at that time did not tally with the outcome. And another thing is, if it was voted, I want to know whether the board voted for that decision. At a recent event, we were all together, I can see every one of you masked up, but we were all together without masks, we were all breathing at each other, and we had fun answering questions. So my understanding is that, based on that, is that we are all masked up here because of the camera. Let's keep politics out of our school system. These kids are suffering. You have heard them speak. They don't like the mask. And even the scientists themselves, Dr. Fauci, if I'm lying, go to YouTube, he had said several times that masks does not work. So where are we getting all this from? So my question is, if it was voted for, when was it done? I need the answer. Thank you.
Let's see, Brian Oswald.
30 minutes is up.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Oswald, 30 minutes is up for this part of the conversation. We will come back if we have time for the second public comment after we go through the people who do not, who want to speak on something other than agenda items. We can go back and try to catch some of these people that did not get a chance to speak. Mr. Miller, well, nope, board updates. Mrs. Schaefer, oh, I'm sorry, you want to address Mr. Ady's question about how you arrived at this decision?
Yeah, I've said it a couple of times in here, that the decision to go with masks was a result of basically a plea from Southwest Ohio pediatricians and doctors to mask up to avoid quarantines. And so I said it as a response to a litany of questions that night, and I'm just saying again, that's the same thing I've been saying, that that came on the Saturday before school started. Do you want me to address anything else at this time?
If you would like to address, he would like to know if it was a political move.
Not a political move, and we, no, we don't get extra money for it.
Don't get extra money.
Let's see, Mrs., I'm sorry.
You cannot speak from the audience.
Also, Mrs. Boddy, I have information on masks I can send to you. You were asking about mask information, I have that, that I can be glad to email that to you. And I think that most of the people were just making comments.
Yeah, that's.
The thing, the one question I didn't answer was about a board vote. There was a reaffirming my decision at one of the meetings in September.
August 27.
Thank you.
Yes.
Even sooner.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Board updates, Mrs. Schaefer, Butler Tech.
Here's the Student Success Newsletter that we typically share. At the last Butler Tech meeting, we made the final vote on the bids for the Natural Science Center. As we all know, there's been a lot of pressure on the prices in construction, so there was some concern if we would be able to maintain everything that was desired in the building for the Natural Science Center. And there was actually a, they were going to do this vote in an earlier meeting, and then they delayed it until this meeting. In order to do some breakouts of the bids, they ended up doing some subcontracting and some extra bidding, but they were able to maintain the original prices and the original estimates in the bids for the Natural Science Center and maintain everything they wanted in that building. So that was excellent news, given how much, we all know that construction prices have raised. So we are all looking forward to seeing the fruition of that work in the Natural Science Center. There was also approval of a new contract for Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Goff, so that happened at this last meeting. Another exciting development is, as we all know, there's a great deal of demand as we, for CDL drivers, part of why we are having such challenges in our busing area. And so that was one of the areas at Butler Tech, they are doing training with CDL drivers, and then once they were getting trained, they were having a backlog of six to eight weeks after the training was completed, where the drivers then couldn't actually even get tested in order to get their license. So seeing that need, Butler Tech applied to become a licensing center. So it's become its own entity, it's the Butler Licensing Center, it can't be called Butler Tech. So they have become a site for testing, so anyone can now go and get tested for their CDL license at Butler Tech. So they said it's kind of interesting to see other vocational schools coming to Butler Tech and their, their trucks onsite in order to get tested, but it's a great benefit to the Butler Tech students because now they're able to get tested right away as soon as they finish their training. So that's been a positive. So it's just a soft opening right now, and then they're going to do their hard opening, but they actually have already started that testing. Also, the preliminary data shows that they were able to have about 200 more students be served this year, or last year, with, through Butler Tech, with about six fewer staff members, so that was also good news. So that's all I have for my Butler Tech report. Any questions? Oh, actually, sorry, one more thing. We are doing, our Legislative Committee, of which I am a part of, is doing a State House visit up to Columbus on October 5th and 6th. So that was one last thing.
Any questions? Legislative, Mrs. Logan, Mr. Miller.
The only thing I wanted to mention is that, I believe the board received it as well, so did superintendents across the state and treasures from OSBA, BASSO, ASBO, about the Hearts and Souls Project with school districts engaging their state legislators. And so they put more of an effort on that, so we will do our part on, on our end to reach out to current and future state legislators at all levels. So I just wanted to mention that. If you didn't get it, you should have received something from OSBA, otherwise I'm glad to send it to you.
The only thing I want to mention is House Bill 140, which is the proposed changes to ballot language. I had a legislative committee meeting last week where we discussed this, and I've been asked to write testimony and possibly testify before the Senate Ways and Means Committee regarding it. The changes that are being proposed do not simplify the issue. Ballot language and all of the different levies you can have, the different types of valuation, commercial, industrial, residential, it's complex. And the changes that are proposed do not make it simpler for the person going to the ballot box to vote. So just letting you know, I've, there's been an extension of a reach out to me, and I'm considering that. I will let you know how that goes.
That's all from Logan. Mrs. O'Connor, do you have something?
Do you have something?
I do not, I'm going to defer to you.
All right. Just some bits of information from both the federal, I'm sorry, from the federal, state, and local level. We're looking at the federal, many of us are hearing the news, talking about the fact that the federal debt ceiling has to be reauthorized, and what I would say are some contentious negotiations happening around that. According to NSBA, they do not expect that a government-like shutdown will have a tremendous impact, at least in the short term, on school districts, but it is good to note that that's going on, and has an impact on many other issues. Education Secretary Cardona and Deputy Secretary Martin kicked off a return to the school, return to school road trip, and they visited the Midwest schools in Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, and Ohio this week to promote in-person learning. Good to know that they have the same priorities that we do at the federal level. At the state level, there'll be some testimony tomorrow on House Bill 298, which is rather not the school, the state school board would move to all elected positions as opposed to, almost half of them are appointed by the governor, and OSBA at least is in support of making those all elected with the interest of accountability and transparency back to our community being much stronger. Members of the Ohio Legislative Children's Caucus held a virtual briefing on Monday, and they talked about the mental health crisis that we're seeing among still our state's children and youth, especially throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And it builds on several other challenges that kids have had to deal with, with bullying and abuse, racism, eating disorders, and other undiagnosed mental health conditions, which we know are a continued piece for at least some of our students. There are three states or three school districts that are currently under state oversight, they'll soon be submitting plans to improve their academic performance. That's East Cleveland, Rain, and Youngstown. I congratulate those districts, they're moving closer to being back under local control. And we are looking at kind of a crowded vice to report Senator Portman, who has been a major supporter of career technical education at the federal level. So looking forward to see how that comes out. Several pieces to note in terms of OSBA, did you all receive the briefcase that came out? So the Ohio Department of Education has released some data insights talking about evidence of the pandemic's impact on students in 2021. I think that actually would be a great board discussion to have, to review that material. And I also wanted to note that next month is National Bullying Prevention Month, and Mr. Miller, I'd be interested in seeing what we're doing about that and how we're highlighting that for our students.
Got it.
And then a final piece for my own interest that I'm going to register for is a virtual Zoom that's happening on October 6th, and it's about public discourse and civility in public discourse and how we might better manage that. And in the same piece, and I'd invite all of you to join me in it because I think it would probably be very helpful to us, and in the same issue, it also talked about ways that school districts can handle and school boards of education can handle discussions with their community and make those fruitful discussions with good recognition of diverse thinking and how we might have better conversations with our community. So I'd suggest everybody take a look at it, and I would love to have a board conversation around it. And again, a reminder, October 14th, I think we're all going to the Southwest Region Spring Con, I'm sorry, Fall Conference. That is all I have. Any questions for Mrs. O'Connor? All right, thank you. Do we have any new business?
You want to get me to go ahead and hit my reports?
You what?
I'm sorry, you want me to go ahead and hit my report first?
Oh, so sorry.
That's all right.
I'm not giving you a report, just going to let you, yes. I skipped a whole section of your report. Yes, you may go.
I'm going to just talk a little bit about COVID and the numbers that we're seeing at school. So I get the passion in the room. I do. And I don't like this as much as both sides don't like this. So, but what I'm going to talk about is just the numbers that are going on. The board has the slides in front of you, so I know you can't see the screen, but I just, I like to do the walk and talk. So this is going to So this is going to show you some data year, year over year. So this year versus last year. So let me show you where we're at and sort of, some things are not going to be new. Again, my goal is to keep kids in school and keep kids in education and in activities. So you can see on this slide, this tells you, this is the first six weeks of school, this year versus last year. So last year was mandatory masks, this year is mandatory masks. But now what, what we're seeing in reality with actual numbers. So we've had, last year we had 20 positive students. This year we have 314 so far over the same six-week period. In terms of quarantine students, you can see you had 144 this time last year. Right now we have 778. In terms of staff, we had eight positive staff after the first six weeks. Last year, this year we have 49. You can see how many have been quarantined. Those are real numbers. I'm going to keep going. I'm going to keep going.
Please.
Let me show you, let me show you why masks are working. I'll get there. So I'm sorry, this is my turn, not your turn. This is my turn.
And you're addressing the board.
I just want to, I just want to clarify that Mr. Miller is addressing the board at this moment.
And not the audience.
And not the audience.
Sure, yep, thank you. This study was referenced several times tonight. So I just want to make sure that some of the highlights or key points are up here just for, so everyone knows, different districts, different schools, masks versus unmasked and things like that. I just wanted to face the board. Here's the quarantine numbers. This is why masks are working for us and keeping kids in school. We have quarantine, we have 778 kids that have been quarantined this year. Because masks were worn, 1,748 kids haven't had to be quarantined. We're able to keep them in school, keep them going to homecoming, keep playing sports, not canceling things, trying to keep our kids in school, engaged in learning. We've had six staff that have been quarantined, 29 have been saved by wearing masks. When we talk about masks aren't working, I would argue that they are because they're keeping kids in school. And that's our job. And that's what I've been saying from the get-go. One of the other stressors that this is having is on our staff. One of the speakers at the podium brought that up about how this affects our teachers, our administrators, our staff, and it does. But it also is affecting our substitute teachers and our bus drivers. So we're down 60% of subs since the beginning of the pandemic. This is not unique to Lakota. This is not unique to Ohio. This is everywhere. We also had 25 employees call in sick and we had 25 positions that weren't filled from Sunday night to Monday morning. Teachers are also covering classes. This is another stressor on them during their planning periods. And administrators are also covering classes. Today, we had to not be, we weren't able to fill 10 routes because of what we're dealing with. And so that's another stress where we talked about getting CDLs and things like that. And I will say too, that absences are for various reasons, not just COVID-related. But these are the realities of things that we're dealing with. We can argue masks, no masks, all day. I'm just trying to keep kids in school, trying to keep sports, music, homecoming, things like that going for our kids. Our kids don't miss any more than they have. I know it's not a unique situation, but these are the numbers. This is a reality. We can talk about different studies from here, different studies from that, but those are the numbers that we're dealing with with our kids in school. Questions, comments, concerns from the board?
What specifically, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Specific percentages of our students and staff that have actually tested positive? And the number of students that have been quarantined and how many of those students tested positive out of quarantine?
Not, not a lot. I can tell you out of, out of quarantine, a lot of the students have not tested positive. I think that number, last time I checked, and it was probably a week ago, was about eight, which is not a lot. But that's one of the reasons why you hear about the Warren County study and somebody referenced it here tonight. The study we did last year, we're also trying to get into that pilot. So we are trying to knock down the quarantine time as well. So that's one of the things that we've been working on. In terms of percentage of kids that have to do masks, and I can't do that right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Oh, you know what? Mr. Coney is going to talk a little bit about.
Yes, we do. Sir, please.
Each time we have a meeting, I asked him to talk tonight about gifted, since that's a little bit different. So I asked him to share with some, some things with all of you for about that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, the board. I appreciate the opportunity to update the board as we regularly do on initiatives we have underway in the district, new programs we've initiated, those kind of things. We will be doing this on a regular basis. I will be back in a, a month or so to update the board on the work we've been doing to deal with schooling loss and learning loss, the implementation of our multi-tiered systems of support. We just got our first round of data in analyzing that. So we're excited to be able to bring that back in. I know that's been of particular interest to the Board of Education. And I think it's important for us to keep, I know there are many issues in front of us, but it's important to keep the education of our kids first and foremost. So this report is about the expansion of our gifted opportunities for this current school year. We're excited about this. These changes were made based on data, feedback from families and the need that we've assessed through looking at our data. The basic understanding of this, the need that we had is that our services in the past had been limited and fairly inconsistent. And it had gone back and forth between different content areas and subject areas over time. Our previous gifted model was providing service in Math Plus, which was taught by Gifted Intervention Specialists in grades three through five. Wasn't necessarily a math-specific teacher, but that was the only place that we had services that were provided. Students who identified in any other areas did not get served in that area. So any of our gifted writers or scientists or students in social studies or gifted COG students were not specifically served in that area of their identification. We served a total of 368 students out of 1,400, over 1,400 students who were gifted, identified. Just wasn't necessary. It wasn't appropriate. We wanted to quadruple the number of students who we were able to serve. And we put together a plan that we think will be effective over the course of several years, be able to serve all of our gifted students. The other, one of the other needs that we had was it was only academic in nature. So the services we provided, we understand the social and emotional needs of our students. Our gifted learners have specific social, emotional needs that we wanted to make sure we took care of. We weren't able to provide that on a comprehensive basis. We wanted to be able to fill that need. We also knew that we weren't reaching all of our students. There were students from underserved populations who were not identified through our existing screeners. We had students in dark, who are not able to be identified or served through the way that we provided our services. And also students who were economically disadvantaged. We do not serve them at the same level that we do all of our other students. We thought that was a concern for all of us. We wanted to be able to dig into that. So our goals through our work with this were to serve more gifted, identified students in more, in more subject areas. We wanted to serve traditionally underrepresented students. And we wanted to support more teachers through gifted professional development. That's really the, the trigger for us to be able to serve all of our students. Key components of our plan forward is that we will serve all gifted students in grades three through six. Again, we were serving about a quarter of them previously and we're able to serve all of them spring this year. We'll be writing an education plan for all gifted students in grades three through six this month. We will be developing the ELA Plus, just like we had a Math Plus program. We're developing the curriculum for ELA Plus over the course of the year, that we will to serve students in math and reading in grades three through six. We'll be providing gifted professional development around OD's gifted competencies for all teachers over the next four years. That starts right now. We're tracking those currently. It allows us to serve all those students in grade three through six. We're excited about having that focus. The feedback from our first round of professional development in August was overwhelmingly positive for our students and teachers, which I think is exciting. We will improve our gifted input score on the state report card by providing, providing more service to our students. We've never been able to do that. The challenge for us was being able to dedicate that professional development time. We had other issues and other, other needs at the time. We're able to focus on that now, which is great. We are able to support the social, emotional needs of our gifted learners, which is a huge, we've heard tonight that there is a need for that. We focus on identification and support of our traditionally underrepresented gifted students. We're very excited about being able to do that throughout the course of elementary, junior high and into high school. We'll track the number of students who are taking honors AP, advanced level courses throughout the, the coming years. We're also exploring offering ACT and SAT prep during the Nexus Bell at the high schools. That's our academic support bells. We're built into the new high school schedule. And we're excited about the fact we might be able to offer ACT and SAT prep and also the possibility of bringing that testing environment back into the school day rather than on the weekend. One key piece of this is the role of our gifted intervention specialists. Without them, we could not do this work. The GIS, or Gifted Intervention Specialist, facilitates systemic processes for acceleration for our students who are most gifted. GIS focuses on identifying and serving traditionally underrepresented populations. We've been working a lot specifically on that this year. The GIS owns their, their home elementary buildings professional learning. So they are the ones leading the professional development, which really puts them in sort of the expert role with the students and the teachers that they're serving. They provide gifted intervention and enrichment for cluster groups in reading and math and three and six. So that's the way that we're able to serve students throughout the course of the school year. And they provide enrichment and professional learning for all of our VLO students who are still learning virtually from home. We are excited about this. We are measuring all of our success rates through surveys, through achievement results, through our state testing, our MAP testing, AP and ACT testing. We will be back regularly to you with reports on how that is going. And I'm excited to share this update and the success that we'll have in the future. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Questions for Mr. Coney?
I know there's been some discussion of exploring ACT and SAT prep during the school day for, before Matt was here. So are we getting close to moving beyond the exploratory stage of that, do you feel like?
We had two phone calls today. I hope to have a plan in place by two weeks from now. So be able to bring that back. That's a big part of that, that Nexus Bell that, that academic support bell. The challenge was when does that happen during the school day? We've got time available for that. We're trying to make sure that it meets the needs that we have. So I hope to be able to have something to report very soon.
Mr. Coney, could we get that reporting written for me, please?
What's that?
What you just did.
Sure. It's just handwritten notes for it. Be happy to turn that into something.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a GIS in every K six, K through six buildings?
No, we do not.
Do they share?
The, in grades three through six, they share across two partner buildings.
Two partner buildings, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
We used to have a parent group that worked with our LEED's parent group. Do we still have that?
We do. In fact, I was talking to Lauren Webb, who is our Director of Gifted. And just on Thursday, Friday, she was talking about trying to re-initiate that. They had had some change in leadership, I think, that, that caused that to happen. So I think that was something that she's interested in. I'd be happy to report back on the success of that, if that be.
I was going to ask what the feedback has been on this new model thus far this year?
Or have you solicited that feedback?
We have solicited that feedback. Some of it was unsolicited as well, as usually happens. I think as with any change, there are some questions that come up. Some changes cause some concern sometimes. We had some of those around PSAT testing in specific. We had some differences of when we offered that testing last year because of what we were able to do, some remote learning going on. And that really prompted us to sit back and say, where are we with high school testing and what can, what can we do differently because of that? I think overall, the, the feedback I've gotten has been positive. I think there are probably specific individual cases who are not as, as enthusiastic about it. But overall, I would say it's pretty positive for early on.
I guess that does lend the question that people don't realize, PSAT testing is the gateway to get national merit recognition. And I think a lot of people don't recognize that. Some schools do that where they test all of their students. And then they tend to have a higher number of students who are accepted into the National Merit Scholar Program than we may have because it's more of an optional program for us typically, traditionally. We've done it both ways. So is that something we're looking at potentially bringing back to be something that more students access or we make it?
I would say more, not all. I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate for all students, but, but for more students, I think so. And honestly, I think the changes moving towards something that was optional or not during the school day was during a time of a lot of over-testing that was happening across the state. And that was one reaction to that. We've seen fewer end-of-course exams. We've changed some of our MAP testing requirements at the upper grades. And I think it's a very valid point to bring up again, if that is something we want to move back to. Gives us good data to use. I think that's one of the things we're looking at for this ACT prep course also, is to be able to gather some good data in from that. So again, I'd like to be able to come back and, and share sort of an update on this in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I, I just want to first say I applaud you and your team and Mr. Miller's direction with you all in making this a priority. I know that we, gifted educate, gifted education is one of those things that we always know that we could do more of, right? Serve more kids, whatever that may be. But we also know it's limited by the funding that we get as well. So as you're talking, one of the things I just wanted to highlight is that we recognize the fact that we have many, many gifted learners within our school in underserved populations. And I just want to applaud you and the team for taking a step back and saying, how do we look at every one of our students in the school system? And ensure that we're reaching them through gifted services. And I know that whenever you start talking, talking about taking away a human for direct service and doing a different model, that gets people a little anxious. But I do believe that your multi-levered approach is what we need to ultimately increase services across the district. And I know that it's going to be a learning, it, there's going to be learning behind it. We might miss some areas. But I'm just thankful that the team is looking at it and increasing the services and trying to get those 1,400 students, all 1,400 students rather than, did you say 368? So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, I think all teachers going through that professional development, so much of that work that the kids go through is project-based learning, which I think again, benefits every one of our students if they have more access to project-based learning in any of their classes. So I think that will be helpful to every student and every class.
Well, that, that's really the, for us to be able to provide that professional development to everybody, it's really good teaching. It happens to work really well with gifted learners, but it's really good teaching. And understanding the social, emotional needs of those kids also is really important as they're going through that. As we challenge students, you want to make sure that you have that safety net for them also.
We think it also helps our teachers to differentiate instruction across the board with all students. I agree with Julie. I think that lifts everyone up. So I think that's great. You're approaching it that way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'll just echo what Brad said. Thank you for the work you're putting in. Looking forward to hear more later on.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coney. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Logan, you're up with your administrative report.
I don't like to have my back to people. I'll keep turning. So tonight is about permanent appropriations. And it's that time of year before the end of September. The district must approve permanent appropriations or our budget for the district. And so you might recall, at our June 28th meeting, you approved temporary appropriations, which is our tradition. We approve temporary appropriations and then before October 1st, we approve permanent appropriations. So that's what is before you tonight. Okay. So the way that we do this is you are requested to adopt the budget on a fund object level. So our funds are things like the General Fund, our Food Services Fund, Child Nutrition, our Permanent Improvement Fund, all of our different federal grant funds. And then the object detail is going to be similar to what we see on the five-year forecast. And so on the five-year forecast, the way that that's broken down is salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, equipment, et cetera. So the next page is a chart of all of the different funds. And that overall appropriation budget for each fund. And then also the percentage that each one of those funds account for as our total. So our grand total is over 237 million. And just as an example, our general fund, which is our, our main operating fund, is 78.5% of that total. The other thing I want to point out is you're going to see that five- The other thing I want to point out is you're going to see that 507 towards the lower middle of those funds. And you see 5% there. That one, if you looked at that last year, it didn't even show up as a big percent of overall. But it is the time we are in and those federal dollars that are coming to the district are representing more monies that we receive. So I mentioned that the way that you appropriate in this district is on the fund object level. So this chart just breaks it down further. Each fund, and it shows the salaries, benefits, purchase services, et cetera, by fund. I like pie graphs. I think pictures are nice to show that as well. And so all I did here was I broke out the main five funds that you appropriate. And so again, as I mentioned, that ESAR is 5%, your food services fund, 2.4% of the overall total, permanent improvement, 2.5%. And your bond retirement, 5.6%. The next chart just kind of shows the percentage when we look at those objects. And how much are we appropriating for the different object levels? And so on this chart with all funds, 64% are appropriated towards salaries and benefits. And we're in a service organization business. So that is what you would expect. And then this one shows the general operating funds for your salaries and benefits as well. The next chart gets a lot of attention. It's one of the things that we've heard today. I think one of our students asked, do we get more money for wearing the mask? Our money that we are getting from the COVID federal aid. And I've broken this down by all of those different layers. So there's ESAR, one, two, and three. CRF, Corona Relief Fund. And then we received a small amount for broadband Ohio connectivity, which Mr. Wesley is familiar with. So we have been given the ability to have almost 20 million in federal funds. We've spent so far a little less than 4 million. And so we have 15.8 million left to spend. Anybody who wants to see details about the CARES Act funding, not just for Lakota, but nationwide, and especially in Ohio, there is a link here that will be on the website so that people can go to that if they would like to see it. But there are no strings attached to this money in regards to vaccines or masks. It is a permissible expenditure to purchase masks with these dollars. But we are not required to mask or be vaccinated in order to be eligible for the money. So one of our four pillars is we are fiscally responsible. And I'd like to point out some ways that proves that fact. Last year, we ended, our general fund balance was over $113 million. That represents 213 days or over seven months of cash sitting in our general fund. We had, we've balanced our budget for over nine consecutive years. So this year, this appropriations that you are approving will be a decade of balanced budgets for Lakota local schools. And I don't know that you've had that record before. So you should be proud of that. You've also established and set up a rainy day fund, and it has a balance of over $5 million in it. At the next board meeting, I will be asking you to approve a transfer into that rainy day fund. And it's going to be closer to 7 million. One of the other things that I would like to do is dispel rumors. I know one of the rumors, I've already tried to dispel, which is are there strings attached with the federal monies? I know, Mr. Jesse, you've reached out to me and it's a rumor. It's not true. Another thing that is not true, we have not spent our reserves. We have not spent our reserves. We have the largest cash balance. I've been here going on 11 years. And it's the largest cash balance that I've seen in the district. And I can't find a larger cash balance, a larger reserve in the history of Lakota that I have looked for. So this chart, again, I like charts. So I went back to 2010, all the way through last year and charted this. So revenues are blue, expenditures are red, and the cash balance is green. That yellow line is by policy you established a 90-day balance for the fund balance. And if it drops below that, then the superintendent and I are supposed to come to the board and say, red flag here, we need to do something. We're not, we have not gotten close to that yellow line. The green line, cash balance, you can see it has been increasing. The blue bar, which is revenues, has been above the red bar, which is expenditures since 2013. And these are actual dollars. This is, these are the same graphs that I show with the five-year forecast year after year. But I thought it was important, especially if there's rumors out there, to just dispel them. We have the largest cash balance we've had that I can go back and find. Items to consider, we do have a new state funding formula this year. Our last payment from the state in October will reflect actual numbers. So right now, the money that we are receiving are based on estimates, which happens. They need a little bit of time to make that transition with all of those changes for that very important new funding formula. One of the biggest changes is now the state is directly funding charter and community schools, scholarships. So to Lakota, that means when you look at these appropriations under purchase services, you won't see these numbers now. So $1.6 million to community schools, 2.5 million for scholarships, and 1.5 million for open enrollment will not show as an expenditure to Lakota now. Which is the way it should have been all along, but I digress. The other part too is the ESAR impact on the general fund. We'll talk more about that with the five-year forecast. But it is going to have an impact on the sustainability of our general operating fund. Because we are able to supplant with ESAR, which means we can replace general fund expenditures. We don't have to keep supplementing. It doesn't have to continue to be extra to spend those dollars. We can replace what we're currently doing. So in summary, I'm asking for you to approve the permanent appropriations, which we do traditionally. We can request modifications throughout the year. That's allowable. And the five-year forecast will be coming back up in November. And so we'll get to talk about all this again with more details. And we do plan on doing a deeper dive, especially around the staffing piece. Because our ESAR dollars and MTSS and some of those pieces that we're doing, I think it's important for you all to understand how all that is working together. So we're going to take a little bit deeper dive on that. So questions?
Jenny, there's, what are some things that you can and cannot, if you just briefly spend the ESAR dollars on? Because there are some limitations to those, correct? Some guidelines?
There are, but I will say, I mentioned that you can supplant with the ESAR dollars. We're supposed to use that money to, for, as an example, our nurses. Remember I mentioned you can supplant? So the salaries and benefits for our nursing staff, we're going to pay out ESAR. Because it's trying to combat COVID. So our nursing staff is one of those ways. But it has to be in connection with the pandemic. So we, but I will argue, you can make a lot of, you can find a lot of ways to find a permissible way to spend that money. One of the ways, though, that some of the districts have steered away from because the guidance I've been given is you need a legal opinion is if you want to use the monies. Because some districts have gotten quite a bit of money. And they've talked about maybe building wings onto an elementary school or building an entire new building. That is a little more complicated because this money has to be spent quickly. And building a new building doesn't happen quickly. So that's an example of one of those ways that they told us to kind of stray away from, stay away from.
Any other questions?
Just thank you once again for all your work in the financial realm. We always appreciate the detail and the accuracy of everything that you do.
Thank you.
Jenny, when you're talking about staffing positions, those are positions that if they're added or if they're paid for out of the ESAR funds, they will eventually be coming back out of the general fund. So it's important that we monitor our staffing and how that number of staff are rising. Because those funds are not going to be funded repeatedly over time. I think that's important to note.
That sustainability piece is absolutely critical. But maybe, or maybe not too, Linda, some of these positions, especially with MTSS, we have talked about, you know, are all of those positions necessary and needed all the way down the line? Or is it important to do some of this work with some of the people to start it up? And then maybe it's taken on by existing people and you don't need all of the positions you need at the startup. So those are some of the conversations we'll have.
I agree completely with reallocation and watching our staffing numbers. I also think it's important to note as we're looking at the general, at our reserve, which is terrific to be in this place. It's taken a lot of work to get there. But it's important to note that we have some major expenses coming up. For instance, a $206 million facility plan, based on what we determine we'd like to do with that. And that could make a serious dent in that $113 million reserve.
We definitely need to start talking about our facilities and our facilities master plan again. And look at all the options for the financing of such a big master plan. I agree.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Is there any new business?
No.
Okay, we are moving on to, we need a motion to ratify superintendent plan to mandate mask K-12 for students and staff until the time that Superintendent Miller recommends a change.
So moved?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes. Mr. Miller, do you plan to put a timeline in place for when this will be discussed again with the board and with the community?
I don't, I don't think so much a firm, hard date. It's just based on what the numbers are telling us, what the science is telling us. I'll tell you that the numbers that we're watching, and I mentioned this at the last board meeting, I think two board meetings ago, is we were told that there'd be an uptick in the Delta variant. And we were seeing that peak. I think maybe we're close to being on the downside of that. So I'm hopeful that if numbers go down, we can make some accommodations without waiting for a date that will do it when it's consistently low. And then we'll adjust accordingly. So I don't think a date, I mean, that's up to the board, obviously. But in my opinion, I think if we had to make a change, I would obviously give you all a heads up again and make that change based on what UC Health, Children's, and ODH are telling us.
You can make that change at any time. Correct? We don't need to have a board meeting more.
I agree with you that we have given permission to do that. But again, as I said the last time, I think this is a really important issue to our community.
Absolutely.
And if we don't put a touch point with the board, a regular conversation with the board on the masking mandate, in my mind, it would be very easy for the community, for our parents and our students to just say, well, it's going to be another year-long mask mandate and it won't change. And so I have some concern about not putting another date to come back to the board.
I've been giving updates, I believe, every, every board meeting.
Can we just get an update every, I mean, he does a virus update or a pandemic update at every board meeting?
And I think that that's really important to do. I've had a conversation and I'll go ahead and go into some of this. I said at the last meeting that I really wanted to see what our local numbers look like. And hope that a month of being in school and looking at those would make a difference. So as I'm looking at these, and thank you for this, this is really helpful to have this kind of information. We are quarantining 4.56 of our student population. And we're actually having just under 2% positive cases out of our 17,000 students. So certainly not a significant number. Not that I want any children to be ill, but it's a significantly lower number than maybe anticipated.
And that's another reason why we put in for that survey or that pilot project that Warren County got approved for.
And we have not gotten approved to do that.
Not yet. We were essentially told, let's get Warren through first and then we'll see what we can do.
Those kind of numbers, though, when I look at that, it just, again, it goes back to, are these quarantine numbers, are these quarantine protocols actually reasonable for our students? And are they effective when we're looking at those kind of numbers?
And again, that's why we did the study last year. We were one of nine districts in the state of Ohio that worked to get the quarantine numbers down. And if you look month over month last year, you can see how the quarantine numbers went down and were changed. And it's really something that we're hopeful that we get to do again with Butler County or on our own.
When I had asked you for the quarantine numbers last week, out of how many positive cases, number of students quarantined, how many were actually out of the quarantine?
Last I heard, it numbers eight.
That was eight.
Correct.
Which is .047 of our population. And that's just stunning to me.
I agree with you.
It's crazy. So when I look.
This is a discussion, please, this is discussion among the board.
This is your last warning or you will be removed. Sorry, Mr. Miller, that you had to be interrupted so rudely.
So when I look at, I requested Fairfield numbers and they are masking optional. And Butler Tech numbers, they are also masking optional. Because I was wondering, what does that look like, mask mandate versus masking optional? So Butler Tech, and I went off their main campus because it's not reasonable to use their satellite students that are in all of our public school districts. So just their main campus, approximately 1,800 students, mask optional. They quarantined 47 students, 2.6, and they had 0.7% positive cases. Again, mask optional.
Just a reminder, those are just high school students who have had the opportunity to be vaccinated as well, just as a.
You're absolutely right. I don't have the vaccination numbers for any of them.
I just want to make sure that apples to apples.
Absolutely. That's reasonable. And two staff were.
Please stop. Please. We're having a meeting. I just, I want to engage with my colleagues up here and have a discussion around this. Please. Thank you.
Two staff members and one was positive out of the quarantine. And then Fairfield numbers, 10,000 students were enrolled, 124 students quarantined, which is 1.24, 25% or .25 were actually testing positive. So again, I'm looking at, I'm not seeing any kind of a statistical difference between masking optional districts, at least these two local ones. And again, taking the non-vaccine into account and what we're doing. And so I want to ask my colleagues to really think about this. Those numbers are not justifying the mask for me. And so I have a. And so I have a lot of concern. Let me finish, guys. Thank you. I'm happy to talk to anybody afterwards, but let me finish, okay? I really, I am not anti-mask. I am, however, supportive of parents making decisions for their children in conjunction with their healthcare providers. And I know we heard on both sides of the issue tonight, I really appreciate all the community comments, especially our students speaking. That student voice makes a big difference. And maybe right now it's a silent voice that we're not hearing very much from. So I do take that into account in my thinking that masks are not benign for all students. And several parents spoke tonight about their parent, their kids are doing great with it. Really appreciate that, glad they're having a good experience, but I don't think we can assume that's true for all students. So Matt, when you and I talked last Friday, you were talking about, we were looking at numbers because I'd asked you about them. And thinking about mask efficacy, how effective are the masks? What are they really doing for us? And you can go back and forth on, is it a cloth mask? Is it a surgical mask? We haven't mandated what type of mask we want. So right now I think we run the gamut of what kids are going to school with. So we had a building that we had 20% of our students and staff were out, but it wasn't because of COVID-19, it was for a stomach virus.
No, it was for a multitude of things.
It was a multitude of events. Okay. I thought you had told me a stomach virus.
That was one of the things that was going on, but also they were out for COVID as well.
How many of those came, how many, what percentage of that was COVID?
The number of students that came down ill during the day took it to 20%, but I can find out for you.
So then I have to ask if, if all of those viruses were happening, including the stomach bug, again, how effective are the masks and what difference are they generally making? As of a couple of weeks ago, 27 states were not mandating masks and allowing local flexibility, including Ohio. And nine states have prohibited schools from implementing mask mandates. And I have to say that I don't think the trend is moving toward more restrictions. And I'm very concerned when we say we're just going to leave it open-ended instead of having a regular community conversation, board conversation about our numbers and what those look like. I think this continues to be of interest to our staff, to our family, to our staff, to our students. I think they need to hear from us on a regular basis what the numbers are and the justification for continuing the mask mandate because I'm not seeing that in the numbers. So I would strongly ask my fellow board members to consider once again going back to the CDC guideline, which was strongly recommended and where we started just prior to the school year and allowing that to be a choice between parents and guardians and their healthcare providers.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Just a couple of things. One is just as, as a reminder, for students that are struggling, we do have a waiver that has been put in place in our schools and in our districts. So that goes for any of our students or staff that might be struggling with wearing a mask. Secondly, this really isn't about masks or not masks, it's about quarantining and keeping our kids out of school. So I'm just saying from when I hear you say this, that we have, you know, 1,750-ish kids that would have been missing significant amount of school and or events and we would be canceling things. So if this were as easy as, as some might believe, we'd be, we'd be having a different conversation. It's not and we're not. I would also encourage, and I'm sure that you've done that, so I'm not saying that you didn't, but I also encourage you to look at other districts aside from the ones that aren't masking up, but the ones that had, were highly recommending and then shifting the masks and where they're at and the things and opportunities that their kids lost by doing that instead of just masking up from the get-go. To me, it goes back to opportunities for our kids. That's all it goes back to. Nobody in this room hates masks more than me for a multitude of reasons. But it is where we're at now in terms of the quarantine. And it goes back to keeping kids in school and not taking opportunities away. That's the way it's been from, from the get-go. And I don't think it's really open-ended. I mean, I've been talking, this is all, I don't say all I do, but it's been my main focus for 18 or 20 months now. And so I don't think it's open-ended at all. I think it's day-to-day and ongoing.
And I think it's a very fair question. And I know you do try to advocate, but I think it's a fair question to push back on the state and to push back on the health department to say, how many school learning days and learning hours are being lost to quarantine protocols that don't seem to make that much difference?
More if we didn't mask up. I'm just, I'm just saying, more, more if we didn't mask up. That's the hand, that's the hand we've been dealt.
I think it's worth pushing back harder.
I have, I have been pushing back pretty hard. I know it doesn't come down here, so.
Okay, yeah. Officer, can you relieve him?
What?
Oh, my gosh. That's the people that want to.
Please stop. Please stop. Please stop.
We have a child in the room?
Exactly.
I, I.
I would like to make a motion to pause the meeting for 10 minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Logan, will you call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes. We will take a 10-minute break.
We are back after a short break. I just would like to remind the people in the audience that board meetings are business meetings held in public for the board to have business discussions. They are not public meetings. They're business meetings held in public. It's hard to have discussions when people are yelling from the audience. Where we are right now is we have a motion on the floor. If everybody has done discussion, Mrs. Logan? No?
I think this is.
Sorry?
No, I'm done.
You're done?
My comments.
Okay. Any other comments before we call the roll? Mrs. Logan, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
And Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
This brings us to treasurer's recommendations, A and B. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Logan, will you call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent's recommendation and your motions, A and B?
So moved. Second.
Are you ready, Mrs. Logan? Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
We have reached the second portion of public comments, which can be about anything. They does not have to be about agenda items. I will remind you of the rules that I read earlier. We are going to start with the people who signed up for non-agenda items. And if we get through those in 30 minutes, we will go back to the people that wanted to speak on agenda topics. So the first person I have that wants to speak on a non-agenda item is Debbie Eaton.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Eaton and I live on St. Andrews Drive in Westchester. I've lived in this district for 33 years and I am the proud mom of two Lakota West grads. One is now working for a Silicon Valley startup and the other's in his fifth year at UC in computer science. They are both doing really well in the tech world, thanks to a great deal to the education they received here at Lakota. They both have thrived in diverse and inclusive school and work environments, thanks to their experiences here in the district. When I see exciting things happening here, like the Cyber Academy, Sources of Strength program that was discussed tonight, the excellence on all the arts programs and so many other things that are happening, I know that Lakota is leading the way in education and planning for the future in ways that other districts aren't even considering. I'd like to thank all the teachers, support staff, administrators, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and the board for their dedication and creativity in and out of the classrooms every day, especially now. This has been a crazy 18 months. And it's clear that Lakota is being led by brave and thoughtful leaders who have the kids' best interests at heart. Mr. Miller, you, your, your visibility, your support of all students is evident and you have made really tough decisions about being open in masks that were met with a lot of opposition. Get the schools opened and we've been a model for other schools across the nation. Board members, these meetings have been contentious, obviously, and difficult, and yet you continue to serve and lead in a way that speaks to your commitment to our kids and to. to serve and lead in a way that speaks to your commitment to our kids and to our community. So I just want to say thank you, all of you, for doing a great job in extremely difficult circumstances and for your service to the community and to our kids.
Thank you. Daryl Sanford?
Daryl Sanford. I live in Westchester on St. Andrews Drive. Be myself honest on time here, so. And I just wanted to thank you as well on Debbie Eaton. I mentioned the Cyber Academy, and it's been an exciting couple of years for the Cyber Academy. And I'm looking at around the table here, and I know the board has supported the Cyber Academy by all means, and then Mr. Matt Miller as well has been a fantastic supporter. One of the things that I'm honored to do as part of the community is to volunteer for the Cyber Academy. It's my day job. It's what I do at night on weekends and so on. And I also wanted to make sure that I called out several of the fantastic Lakota employees that are involved with the Cyber Academy. And this is a note of preference because they all have their very special roles and support that they're serving. So Keith Coney, who spoke with us earlier tonight, Andrew Wheatley, and Katie Bauer. And again, I know that they have a support system behind them. They've accomplished some just fantastic things. As a matter of fact, last Wednesday night, we had a kickoff meeting, and we were able to attract, I can't name the company name, but a keynote speaker from a very prominent, large international company that happens to be based in Silicon Valley. And I'll tell you what, if he didn't convert some of the students that were maybe on the fence of leading into cyber one, I'm sure he got it done because it was a fantastic presentation. So we got to hear last Wednesday night about things like why cyber and the vision for the Lakota Cyber Academy, again, being led by Mr. Keith Coney, and also again with Andrew Wheatley and Katie Bauer behind him helping out along the way. We got to hear about the courses, the curriculum, the college credit, the partnership with Sinclair University is just so key. And then also some of the competitions and certifications. Lakota is already putting themselves on the map, not just for computer science, but also specifically for Cyber Academy. And we talked about some of the real-world learning, some of the mentors. We also call them Sherpas in the Cyber Academy, and just some of the fantastic things they're doing. And I would ask anyone who I know of this is I'm addressing the board, but we're looking for volunteers, adult volunteers, either be Sherpas or to get involved with the program to speak with the students and help them understand what it means to be a cybersecurity professional and really continue to build local community and ultimately help the society at whole. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Sanford. Mrs. Marfeta.
Sarah Marfeta, Hunters Ridge Drive, Westchester. I spoke at the last school board meeting, and some called my comments mudslinging and embarrassments to the community. I stand by my comments because they are facts, not my personal opinions. And if they embarrass the community, then maybe the community should hold people in a position of power accountable for the way they choose to conduct themselves when they accept a public seat to represent us. A school board should be a nonpartisan board. Yet does anyone not wonder why the Republican Party is endorsing school board candidates? We have made grave mistakes in the past with voting someone solely for the R in front of their name. Politics has no place in making decisions for our children, and yet we are ignoring the fact that they are doing all they can to control the narrative of who is elected to the school board with the help of a sitting school board member. The school board member is a longtime personal friend of a sitting senator who has great interest in who is elected to the school board. The school board member is publicly supporting and endorsed candidate that they themselves have said to numerous people is unstable and has had a traumatic, in their words, not mine, experience with this candidate as this candidate charged a stage at the veterans event, attempted to pull the microphone from this school board member's hand, and was screaming like a lunatic about election fraud. This school board member even told us that the sitting congressman had to shield them from this screaming person because they didn't know if they had a weapon or not. The candidate they are protecting, is now supporting, has been mentored by a self-proclaimed former Marxist since the beginning of April. That's their words, not mine. This former Marxist is also a land developer, lives in Middletown, and owns land here in the Lakota School District. This former Marxist told this candidate that they would help them get elected with Marxist tactics at a meeting that about 17 people attended and heard in April. The campaign manager for one of the endorsed candidates also has a stake in who's elected. Her husband is also a land developer, but she conveniently forgot to tell anyone that through all the discussions we've had many these past months. She also has a brother-in-law who has a child in a relationship with a sitting trustee's daughter. This person who quotes Bible and inserts Jesus in every chance they get publicly lied and defamed a good, solid candidate because they chose to walk away from a political party who wanted to control what she said, what she did, and who she associated with, all under the guidance of a sitting school board member doing the bidding of the Republican Party. The campaign manager is the ultimate wolf in cheap clothing. I was told to back off for the greater good. In my eyes, the greater good is our children, not a political party, and I will not shut my mouth until everyone knows what I and many others know. This is not about Republican, Democrat, black or white, mask or no mask. This is about our children, and I am happy to sit down with anybody on either side of this, including school board members who want more information than I have because it doesn't just affect my children, but all of our children. Politics has no place in our schools, and if we don't know who we are truly voting for, then we get sucked back into the same old lies and have the same old results.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Is it Cynthia? Sorry.
If you can have other people line up, get more people in. Two or three more. Yeah, people didn't get to speak earlier.
Also on deck is Rebecca Crawford, I believe.
Good evening. And thank you for the opportunity to come before you. My name is Cynthia Pinchback Heinz. I live in Gray Fox Drive, Westchester, Ohio. My husband and I are 30-year residents of Westchester. We are parents of two wonderful children, 29 years old and 36 years old, both of whom attended Lakota schools. I earned my PhD in educational leadership. I've spent more than four decades as an educator, about half of which was spent teaching at the secondary and higher education levels, and the other half was spent in corporate, where I led training and diversity efforts at two Fortune 500 companies. So this evening, I'm here to address the misunderstood topic of critical race theory. Now, about 30 years ago, I, along with other concerned African-American parents, appealed to the district to develop culturally competent strategies and practices to prepare children for the inevitable growth in racial and cultural diversity in this district. Now, at this time, the district fell short on addressing systemic issues related to race. Now, from what I can glean from the rhetoric around critical race theory, many who oppose it do not understand it. It is common to fear that which or whom we don't understand. Now, while I'm not aware of critical race theory being taught before the graduate level, I am certain that we want our children to be critical thinkers. And this means that I challenge all of us to be critical thinkers, even when it comes to discussions about race. When my family moved to Westchester 30 years ago, the total minority population in Lakota schools was about 4%. And according to U.S. News and World Reports, today, the minority population is closer to 30%. Now, I'm encouraged to see, like, the sources of strength and those types of programs. But I'm also concerned when I believe that there are those who, rather than embracing the critical mass of the 30%, would dismiss them. So what I do is now appeal to you to embrace a culture of inclusiveness and inclusivity. Also want you to, or employ you to look closely at the district's systems that impact the district on how we recruit, hire, develop, and evaluate teachers and administrators. Doing so will create a culture that values all and strengthens our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca? Pardon me?
Sure. She can give her time.
Just has to tell us her name and where she lives.
My name is Sarah Barbosa, and I live in Cincinnati Dayton Road. Kids shouldn't wear masks. They should have a choice to put it on or take it off. You risk children by getting sick because with masks, when you breathe into the mask, you're breathing out bacteria into the mask. When you breathe back in, you're breathing the bacteria back in, so you can get sick from all the bacteria that you are breathing back in. Almost disappeared since COVID came out. Masks don't work. The virus is also is small, so it travels through the masks. In fact, it can go through any part of the body. You shouldn't force kids to do something that will hurt them. No one should be forced to wear a mask. Kids are not likely to get the virus, so you shouldn't make them wear one. If God doesn't force us to believe Him and gives us full will, then why aren't you giving us miracle freedom? If you don't want to listen to students, then send someone who will and care. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna? Brianna, is it Oakley?
What was that one? Who'd you say? I'm sorry.
Brianna? Or Brian? Brianna? No?
That's the left.
Um, Matt Averman? Mr. Oswald, then you'll be up next.
Matt Adelman, Peak Drive, Liberty Township. It's a couple of things. Some people talked about the, you know, 1918 flu.
Can you speak a little closer, please?
If you converted the 1918 flu to today's, it'd be like 4 million people, so it's not really a fair comparison. Also, people brought up death rate of flu versus COVID. COVID, nine deaths in Ohio in 18 months, flu year 2019, 2020, 14 deaths. So still not comparable if you want to talk about percentages, which means less. What's next? So I talked last time, so now it's mandated masks. What about the vaccine? Because Pfizer's about to come out with, I think, six to 11 vaccines. Is it going to be mandated that our kids get vaccines, even though Israel has a study out that shows, proven that if you don't, if you've never had COVID and you get the vaccine, and you've had COVID and you get over it, your natural immunity is stronger than your vaccinated immunity. Actually documented, it's not made up, science. So also, there's more variants, right? So Delta doesn't care whether you've been vaccinated or not. And then the CDC's said, okay, well, you are 17 times more likely to be hospitalized if you are unvaccinated. But the numbers are 35 people per 100,000 population. So, quote that Cincinnati, about 100 people have peaked COVID this year who have been hospitalized at peak times. I've studied how often people are in who are out. Are we going to do this for the flu? Because more kids in the demographic that we are responsible for died from the flu over COVID. So are we going to now mandate this in general flu season? Also, I have a request. There's been, I think, five or six people have spoken, have no kids in the district right now. This is a school board meeting. I think that there should be a box beside if you were going to talk and whether or not you actually have a kid in the road, because there are going to be people that are here that are not going to have time to speak. And there are people that have nobody in the district that have talked. Realistically, their opinion in the terms of this does not matter. Realistically, it does not. Lady before me spoke about curriculum. 100% her opinion matters because that's a good thing to talk about. But when we're talking about masks or no masks for kids, they have no opinion because they don't have a kid that is being affected by the policies that are underhand. That would be a suggestion that I would like. I'm not saying that they shouldn't be allowed to talk, but if there's not enough time for everybody, it should be prioritize the kids with kids in the district.
Okay, Mr. Oswald.
Ryan Oswald, 4947, Streamside Court. I'm going to speak with the parents. First of all, if you're, if you want your-
Mr. Oswald, you have to address the board.
And ma'am, I want to remind you, in a public hearing, public forum setting right now of New York versus Sullivan SCOTUS ruling. Thank you.
You have to address the board.
I'm going to speak to the parents now wearing masks. If you want your kids to wear the mask-
Mr. Oswald, that was your first warning. You have to address the board.
Now, parents, if the masks work, then does the mask work? You don't have any problems. Now, parents, if you don't, if you want your kids unmasked, go ahead and unmask up. You are the parents, you know what's best-
Mr. Oswald, please address the board.
That's liberty, that's freedom. Do what you want, and that, and don't, so I don't trample on your rights, you don't trample on mine. Parents, there is no mandate-
Officer, can you please remove Mr. Oswald from the room? Because I've given you two warnings.
This is now, I'm also, I'm being reprimanded, and my freedom of speech is being violated right now under New York versus Sullivan. This is on a recorded line.
Okay, Mr. Oswald, can you please sit down? You forfeited your time because you did not follow what our policies are. I read the policies. The policy states you have to address the board, not the parents.
Are you a parent?
No, I am not a parent of a school child right now. My children have luckily graduated and have a great job.
Okay, I'm speaking to all the other parents up there, too.
Officer, can you please remove Mr. Oswald from the room? I think that we are now going to suspend with public comments. Do I have a motion to suspend with public comments?
Parents, I have some legal information. If you want to talk, get it, or if you're free to talk.
Okay, here's, you may say, you may leave. We will continue with public comments, but you have to follow the rules, please. He was addressing the parents.
Mrs. Casper, could you please call the next name?
Yeah, Lacy? Sir Lacy?
There is not a second motion. Please call the next name.
Oswald's comments. Is there a Lacy Alfray still here? Stacy Lucas. And Lena Messer. Messy? That's the last name that I have. Oh, there she is.
Yeah. My name is Lena Messy. I live in Brooklyn, Illinois, Liberty Township, Ohio. Hi, I am a senior at Lakota East High School this year. I have been tested a total of 18 times for COVID-19. 12 of those tests, my absence at my concert this past Christmas with my senior friends, and an ACT exam that I had taken, a four-week course, had to be canceled because of exposures just at school. But most importantly, I lost two members due to complications of COVID-19. My family did not have the luxury of being untouched by this virus and denying the gravity of COVID-19. To the school board, I want to thank you for maintaining the district mask policy originally released before the start of the school year. This mandate has helped students that would have otherwise been ordered to quarantine by the Butler County Board of Health having one normal year, avoiding the uncertain disaster brought us. With the research backing the effectiveness and safety of masks, and along with the trust that students are wearing them in order to protect others, I feel much safer this year and hope that we can continue to have a somewhat normal senior year. To the parents attending or listening tonight, I understand your idea that you'd like to choose the path your child takes. However, that is only affecting your child. Masks affect anyone your student is around, possibly quarantining a child that is both masked and vaccinated like me. When you choose to have your child forego masks or wear them incorrectly, you're choosing to forego the measures used to protect other children. While I respect parental authority of your child on your own time in your own household, the same logic of parental authority ruling over school authority while in our buildings would mean that dress code and bullying and disciplinary policies should also cause you concern, however, that has not been raised in this meeting. Your authority should not dictate my safety and other students' safety while attending class. Thank you once again to the school board, and thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mr. Zink, how much time do you have left in our 30 minutes? If there's anybody that hasn't signed up, you can line up. I'm sorry, what's your name?
Susan.
It's okay, it happens.
Sarah Webster.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah, I do see you right on the bottom of my list.
It was on the bottom. Sorry. That's okay, it happens. Okay. Yes, my name is Sarah Webster. I'm at 6399 Castle Hill Drive here in Liberty Township. I'd like to ask you, why does your choice to decide for our children if they want to risk quarantine or not? If our kids prefer to breathe normally and be seen, literally physically seen by people, their whole face, and risk quarantine, that should be their choice. That is my single biggest issue right now, is the school board and Mr. Miller, you saying that you're doing this to keep kids in school. I understand that. But at this point, a year and a half into the situation, it should be up to the- But at this point, a year and a half into the situation, it should be up to the children what they want to risk, not not you guys anymore. We are a year and a half through all of this and this virus is not going away. So if they want to risk being quarantined and not wear a mask, that's on them. It it shouldn't be your choice. It's not your choice to make for them. The fact that some of the kids wearing masks is no big deal because the kids are used to it and it's like putting on other clothes, for instance socks that was mentioned earlier, only reflects how manipulated these children have been for the last year and a half. Young kids have a big desire to please and want to help others. So our children have been guilted into wearing these because they are told it helps others. This is wrong. It is not our children's job to put others' needs above their own mental, social, and academic development. It's a shame. The importance of children seeing facial expressions. Look it up. It is vital, especially to little children. They need to see faces. Facial expressions can display personal emotions and indicate an individual's intentions with a social situation. My daughter's in ASL. It's ridiculous. She's in a masked ASL class where where they have to use facial expressions to be able to learn ASL. I had a friend who told me that it's my fault that my kids don't agree with masks, that I should have a better attitude and my kids would have a better attitude. My response to that is pre-COVID, I taught my children to be honest, to stand for what's right even when it's hard. No way I was gonna lie to my children about masking because they're not effective and I know they're not. No way I was gonna tell them to go along with the mindless people who have allowed themselves to have a false sense of security and doing good for your neighbor. Wearing masks is not what's best for a child's development. End of story. And this is a school. That is what should be put first. There are people in stadiums not wearing masks, people everywhere getting to choose. And yet in our schools where their development is going to affect the rest of your life, their life, you are making them put these things on that are affecting their emotions, affecting their development and their learning. Please stop. This has gone on long enough.
Okay, Mrs. Webster, is there anybody else that would like to address? Mr. Jesse?
Resty Jesse, six-five-six-four, Justice Lane. Interesting night, you know, one of the more interesting ones in the past four years of meetings that I have attended. My question is, you know, a lot of the studies that were cited by folks tonight are from local medical institutions. And allegedly, some of them have not been on the up and up with how they've been putting data out about COVID and et cetera. And if it's proven, you know, if it's brought up in a court of law, okay, I'm not saying by one media company or another, but if it comes out in a court of law and one of these media and one of these medical companies, hospital groups is found to have committed fraud in its presentations to our community, is that something that you would throw out? That evidence? I mean, fraud doesn't stand, right? Fraud doesn't stand, correct? So that's my, my question is that. And, uh, you know, I think that, you know, this is freedom of speech. This is a government meeting, so we should all, I mean, I understand, I've been here for four years. You know, and Mr. Lovell said a couple of weeks ago that there would be two people at the meeting sometimes. I was
You were one of them.
And I appreciate when Matt Modus Ice Cream and all that stuff, that was always fun. Not really, I just wanted to say that. But, uh, I think that, you know, the times should be adjusted because we are entitled, especially as hypersensitive as everyone is about subject. Any Lakota resident that wants to get up here and talk, I agree with you splitting it in half. Whoever did that before. Agenda items before, other things after, but everyone that, you know, we all deserve an opportunity to speak, whether you like what we're saying or not, no matter how disgusting some of the things that have been said over the past month or so that have all nothing to do with COVID or anything else. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board?
My name is Will Clark. I live on Lynn Road, Liberty Township. And my, my question to the board would be, this is my first school board meeting here and I sense that there's a lot of division that's been not sufficiently addressed by a lot of the audience. And I was wondering if there was any effort to be made to break down a lot of the claims or sentiments that are being suggested by a lot of the audience members. I think it would be really important for the future meetings that are gonna be had if there was some sort of collective understanding and and shared sentiment with, uh, you know, the members of the public. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there anyone else?
Kimberly Harsh, eight-two-four-five, Lake Shore Drive, West Chester. I just have a question as well. You say there are people that have the mask exemptions and they're not wearing a mask. So Lakota is not fully masked. Do you have any data on how many of those kids have gotten COVID that are not wearing masks? Because you say this is helping keep kids in school, but for two weeks, we've asked for the data and we've never gotten it. Mrs. O'Connor has asked for the data several times and we've never gotten it. I would hope that you have data on the kids that are not wearing masks also and how many of them have contracted COVID. The masks do not work, as these little students are saying, it affects them. Can't you guys be sympathetic and listen to your students and instead of being closed-minded? Because I feel like you guys all have your minds made up. You don't care what your students say, what the parents say. I feel like you are very closed-minded and tyrannical and you don't care about these students and what they're feeling. It it's just, it's common sense. It it doesn't make any sense. The masks do not work unless you wear an N-ninety-five tightly fitted mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harsh. Uh, Mr. Zink? Where are we on time? One minute?
This is my first school board meeting. My name is Nathan Shaw.
Into the mic. Wait a minute, Nathan.
Thank you. Now I'll do it in thirty seconds. My name is Nathan Shaw. This is my first school board meeting. As I listen to, to, to everyone speak their, their piece, everyone is trying to reason. They're trying to use reason. There is no place for reason anymore. Sorry to repeat to the people in my prayer group, but we're not gonna get anywhere with reason. It comes to a point where you have to realize the gentleman earlier quoted a scripture, "And I have one of my own that says, 'If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and forgive their sin and hear their land.'"
Is that time? I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw. Is that time? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. That's time. I'm sorry. That's our thirty-minute time limit.
I have to question, why are we in this position?
Okay, uh, Mr. Miller, would you like to address some of these questions?
Yeah, just a couple of things and I appreciate everyone's comments. Some of them were just statements for the most part. I do wanna address the one lady, Mrs. Hyde, I didn't catch the first part. What you talked about, um, minority students at thirty percent. We just got some data the other day. Our students of color number thirty-eight percent. Someone to clarify that one. And then, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Adelman. Adelman, sorry. Your comment about mandating vaccines, that's not gonna be the intent or that's not where we're headed. Lakota, I know that other school districts inside public is looking at that, but uh, I, I, that's my line in terms of that's a parent choice in terms of vaccinating their kids. So I I said it last time. I think I said it last time. I said it to different groups, but just so you know. And I think the rest of, um, Mr. Jesse, I can talk to you offline, so to speak. Feels like you got a smoking gun I ain't know about. So be interested in hearing that later. So.
All right, um, we have reached the closing.
Can I ask one more question? There was the question from, um, Ms. Harsh, I believe it was, on how many people have gotten COVID who are, have the mask exemption? And we have very few people who use the mask exemption, so
That is, that is correct.
I doubt you have that data because, I mean, the schools, it's like two people.
I can ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know much many more of them quarantined because they weren't wearing a mask versus have COVID.
Yeah, so there's very few people who have, have used the mask exemption, so that wouldn't be, I don't think, a significant, a statistically significant group at this point.
Probably not, no.
Okay, we have reached closing comments. Mr. Miller, we'll start with you.
I don't have any.
Oh, no, he's, she's-
Sorry.
I thought, I thought so too.
Everybody's excited now that I'm not gonna talk. I ruined the surprise.
I'm good. Thank you. I'm good.
You're good. Mrs. Logan? Mr. Pearl?
No.
Mrs. O'Connor?
We didn't get to say anything to our students while they were here, so I just wanted to say I think it's terrific to see students supporting their peers and really appreciate the sources of strength in that program that's happening. To our community members on both sides of the issue tonight, obviously there is a tremendous amount of passion and strong feeling in the room. And I do believe at its heart that it's intended to be in support of our students on all sides. And thank you for turning out. I'm, I'm amazed at how many people walk up to the mic and say, this is my first school board meeting. And I'm sorry that it took controversy to get you to come to your first school board meeting, but thank you for being here and hope that we'll have other first timers as well. I'm very thankful for the work going on with Gifted Ed. I think it was high time that we refurbished that program and able to address more students through it and through the professional development, so that's terrific. I especially wanna say to our students that spoke tonight, that is not an easy thing to do as an adult to get up in front of a room full of people and then express some strong feelings knowing that, um, you could get made fun of the next day in school or something along those lines. It takes a lot of courage. And I really respect that our kids spoke and their voices really meant a lot to me, having the student voice as part of the conversation. I, I need to say this and I, I want, um, I want to express that that is a very hard seat to sit in. I've been there. It's not an easy place to be. And there are often difficult issues that you wrestle with, uh, sitting in that seat. I do believe that we need to really think hard. Maybe it's a board discussion about better ways to handle the public comment because I don't want to see anybody turned away. I don't wanna see, uh, freedom of speech being impinged on and I don't know what that looks like, but I would like to have further conversation about it. Maybe we could look at how some other districts do it. Um, but I do wanna say it's a hard seat and I respect your intent to try to get board business done and hope that you'll continue to come out, community members, and speak to us because your voices matter.
Mrs. Schaper?
Again, I, I'm sorry that it certainly has been a challenging meeting tonight and thank you, Kelly, for trying to make our meeting continue to move forward and follow our policies because it is the board's policy that you're trying to, to make sure is followed. So thank you for doing that work. The Cyber Academy, I'm gonna forget, Mr. Sander, I believe it was. Sanford, um, spoke about that and I had the opportunity to be at the parent meeting this week. And parent and community meeting that they spoke about, um, the Cyber Academy. Uh, and it was two and a half hours of great information. And, you know, you're like, how could that be shorter? But it was so chock full of information, it would have really been hard to do that. Three-year program for our students at this point. And they really leave with some key credentials. I did also, as he spoke about, um, they talk about the community mentors as being circles and I think that's a great term to, uh, speak of. Um, Ron Ford is another person whose name was not mentioned, who's been critical for us as a community member as well, who's been critical for us and leads our advisory board, is my understanding of that group. Thank him for all of his work with our kids. Just tremendous program. They talked about a lot of the work that they do because even in the professional realm, they go to competitions to own their skills in cybersecurity. So they take our kids to different competitions. And they said, one of the competitions, we had as many kids move to the next level as forty-three states have moved to the next level. So for our district to have as many kids represented as forty-three states had represented, I thought was a incredibly impressive uh, statistic. So our kids are being very successful in that program and it really is one of a kind. So thank you to our entire curriculum department for all the heavy lifting that they've done to make that what that is. And I don't know that we fully appreciate what a gem that really is. I'm trying to make my son fully appreciate what a gem that is and, uh, take advantage of that in the future. We'll see if I'm successful because, you know, if mom says you should do that, he's kinda like, yeah, yeah, whatever. But again, a tremendous program that I think more and more students will see just what an asset it is. I, I know one student who's gone through the whole thing and has now got a major in that in college and is super excited about what he's been able to take advantage of. So thank you to everyone who's made that possible. And I just wanna thank Mr. Miller for being proactive and seeing the light. Um, I know we talked about a couple of districts that have been okay, that made masks optional. But I think we've also seen some other districts that have not had that success and have had to cancel a lot of student opportunities and, and cancel school and students have lost many things. So I appreciate your proactive leadership and getting us to where we are and often seeing the light before others necessarily do and making some of those hard choices. So I just wanted to reaffirm my support and appreciate that you have made some very hard decisions. And again, ones that nobody wants to make and be in a position that none of us want to be in. But making sure that kids are getting as many opportunities as they can. So thank you for your leadership.
I don't have anything else to add.
Really?
I don't.
Again, the junior high kids from Plains, that was such an impressive presentation. And I agree with Mrs. O'Connor. I wish we would have been able to have a little comments to them before they leave, but I realized that they were trying to get out, maybe go home and do homework. Again, thank you for coming and, um, it's important that you know that we have policies in place and my job is to follow the policies, whether it's something you agree or disagree with. That's my job and clearly it's not very easy. Mr., I need a motion to enter into executive session for oh my goodness, I can't see my glasses are fogged. And to, for the motion to enter into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee or official and to discuss the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Logan, will you call the board when you ready? Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
And we're going downstairs.